Good morning, and thank you, citizens of Cobb County, for indulging us this morning. We are grateful to be here for this morning's Board of Commissioners meeting. This morning, we have Pastor Jeff Pennington here with Smyrna First Baptist Church for our invocation, who will be followed by Officer Sean Moran of Precinct 2. They will be providing our invocation and pledge. Those who are willing and able, please stand.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this beautiful, beautiful morning. And what a blessing to begin this meeting with prayer. And Father, I just thank you for our Cobb County Commissioners. I just pray this morning that, just as you promised in James Chapter 1, verse 5, that you give generously when we ask for wisdom, Father, that you will supply it in ample measure today. Father, I just thank you for the joy of being a part of this community and how you have entrusted each of us with its present and with its future. And Father, I pray that we'll be faithful, just to make good on this that you have so deeply entrusted to us. Lord, again, I thank you for every member of the commissioning, of the commission. I thank you for their service, not just in making decisions, but for their care for the people of this community. Lord, again, I just give you praise and thanks for today, and in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
You please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, our meeting is now called to order. Again, thank you for being here with us. Before we go into our agenda, I just wanted to make a brief statement regarding a matter at our February 23 BOC meeting that I'll make in consultation with our county attorney. At our last meeting, I understand that there was concern about my vote on Agenda Item Number 26. And I just wanted to share that I am not necessarily in agreement with the assertion that I was required to abstain from voting on the item. Whether it was necessary for me to disclose that my husband sits on the Board of the Center for Family Resources prior to discussion on the matter and my vote is debatable, especially since neither me, my family, have any financial fiduciary or employment interest in the Center for Family Resources. For that matter, any of the four recipients of the emergency rental assistance grant funds, we also did not have any financial fiduciary or employment interest in. Nevertheless, I do want to make sure that I do operate above board and operate in a way that establishes and builds trust with our community. And if I've given the impression of partiality, it was not my intent, and I do want to apologize for that. The Board of Commissioners do have discretion to refrain or acknowledge when there could be a conflict or perceived conflict of interest. And because my husband and I care about this county, and he cares about his service, and we want to make sure that we do not cause such an impression in the future, my husband has actually resigned from the Board of the Center for Family Resources, as we do not want to have any stain mar the good work of that organization or the Board of Commissioners. So that, I am going to delve into, or dive into, our agenda for today. At the top of each meeting, we have been receiving updates from Cobb Douglas Public Health, and we will continue to do that today. I believe they are here virtually with us, and we are going to link them in. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, Commissioners.
How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning. Is that Dr. Memark's voice I hear?
Yes.
I hear you, I just don't see you.
I forget I'm not on video sometimes. Restart that. Okay, great. Thanks for having us this morning, and we'll go ahead and give you our COVID update from, for Cobb County. All right. Okay, great. So. Sorry, just getting this. Okay, fantastic. All right, so we have our numbers from, from yesterday evening, and you can see the state of Georgia's kind of lit up here. We, when we're including both the antigen and the PCR cases for the county, we are at 356 cases per 100,000. You can see that over the, since the surge, just, when you put it all in perspective over to the right, you can see just how massive that surge was during, during the holidays. And we really hope that we do not get anywhere close to this again. It, it makes our July 4th surge look miniscule compared to what happened to us over the holidays. So it really sometimes takes time and perspective to be able to see these things. One of the things that we did hear this yesterday and today is that there has been a lag in electronic reporting from some of our community partners. And so, and it's kind of throughout the metro, it seems like. And so, we may see a data dump soon. I think we will see in the next few days. And so, that may shift a little bit. And it, it's probably going to shift upwards. So I just want to make sure everybody's prepared for that, that there will be a data surge that will come through. What is really important, though, is that even at 356 cases per 100,000, it is still extremely high. And so, we are between three and four times what is considered high transmission for this virus. So it, you know, we have a little bit of breathing room, but it's not time to let down our guard quite yet. We see the number of deaths as well. When we add the confirmed number of deaths with the presumptive, which is antigen and the PCR, we have actually 941 deaths to our district. You can see over on the right, the, just the, the timeframe over the, over which these deaths came in and, and just the sheer numbers that we had. It was, is a very deadly surge for our community, and we definitely have to keep fighting to prevent anything more from happening. You can see that our cases are over 70,000, and we look at that PCR rate, and I, I put the little asterisks there because we are seeing an EHR delay. And so, that will come in and probably increase those numbers. We are seeing some increases, not increases, improvement in hospital admissions, but the acuity is actually still quite high. So people are very sick when they are being admitted to the hospital. I wanted to talk a little bit about the variants. Now, you're going to hear me say every now and then that this battle that we're waging right now is, is, it's a battle of time, of whether we can get as many vaccines into arms as possible and beat the, the number of variants that are coming through. So we've, I've presented to you all before that the doubling time of the, the variants, especially the B.1.1.7 variant, is thought to be every 10 days. And I remember when we had our first cases here, and we're at 171 for the, the state. And that is a huge undercount. They test very, very small numbers for the, the variant. And this week, we were announced that the South African variant is also in the state as well. And so, there are three recorded cases of the South African variant, and that one also can spread very quickly. And so, remembering that we have this, this battle against these variants as well as we continue against COVID-19. So we have to make sure that we keep them at bay as we get people vaccinated. So it has to be a combination of prevention as well as vaccination. When you look at Georgia's accounts, we have over 2.3 million doses that have been administered already. In Cobb County, we have 143,000 doses that have been administered. This is not the number of residents in the county that have been vaccinated. It's actually just how many have been administered in the county. And we are seeing that our residents are able to get vaccines throughout, throughout the metro area. We've, we've done over 32,000 for CDPH and probably closer to, to 30, over 33,000 at this point. And Cobb only has done, I know, over 28,000. We still have a couple of numbers that are coming in from the weekend as well. So we heard news of the Janssen vaccine that's come out. And so, this is through the Johnson &amp; Johnson Company. And so, we have a single vaccine that is being administered throughout the state. The state has gone ahead and prioritized educators for this vaccine. And I know that we have received some in the district for that use. And so, it, it is a convenient vaccine with one dose that's administered for those over 18 years old. When you looked at the overall efficacy of this vaccine, it was 66% overall, and it was over 70%, 74% effective in transmission of, of COVID-19 in the United States. Now, what you need to remember is that the, this Janssen vaccine was actually done throughout the world. It wasn't like the other vaccinations that, that have been investigated. This one was also done in South Africa and Brazil, and so they had a really big variant problem at that time. And so, so the efficacy reflects that. Now, that being said, it has over a 90% efficacy in preventing the hospitalizations from this and 100% in preventing death. And so, this is huge. And I think it's, it's also kind of like some of our other vaccines, like flu vaccines, that in the past, that maybe haven't 100% prevented the transmission of flu, but made, made a huge impact on hospitalizations and death. So it's a very, very good vaccine, and, and it is out now. They feel that it will be this first group that has come out, the first batch of vaccines, will be followed by some more batches in the next few weeks. And they have to build up their supply chain. So on March 8th, yesterday, we had expanded criteria for our eligibility for vaccines in the state of Georgia. And so, included with our, our healthcare workers and nursing home residents and staff and public safety and seniors, we have now expanded to having added adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, caregivers of children with complex medical conditions, and then folks that are working in pre-K, K through 12, decal staff and faculty. And so, I'm going to go into that. We've gotten a lot of questions about this. We wanted to make sure we shared with you all what the state has put out to clarify this. With intellectual disabilities, so they're characterized by significant limitations in both intellectual functioning and adaptive behavior. So this is things like social and practical skills every day. It should, this disability should originate before the age of 22. A developmental disability is a physical and mental impairment that happens before the age of 22 and expected to last a lifetime. And it has to impact at least three activities of daily living. And those kind of things include self-care, receptive and expressive language, learning, mobility, self-direction, capacity for independent living and economic self-sufficiency. So for parents with complex medical conditions that are at high risk for COVID complications, here is a list that the state has put out. And so, it's malignancies that are actually under active treatment. If you have an immunocompromised state from like a solid organ transplant or bone marrow transplant or something where you're on immunosuppressant medication, that's something that would get included. We have critical congenital heart disease. You have asthma in the moderate to severe range. Sickle cell disease, diabetes, obesity, where your child is in the 95th percentile compared to other children of the same age and gender. Cystic fibrosis, significant neurologic injury or condition, and dependence upon medical devices like BiPAP machines and tracheostomies. All right. And once again, we'll show you our, our vaccination site at Jim Miller. We're very, very grateful to the state for helping us with that. And just continued pictures of their work out there. And I'll turn it over to Lisa to update you on some of the other activities that we have going on with the department.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you again to the county commissioners and all the staff with Cobb County. We certainly couldn't do this without you, and we see a light at the end of the tunnel. I think Dr. Memark let me do all the great news this morning for you, and I'm excited to share some progress that we've made. So over the last couple of months, we've been working with the large school systems in Cobb County and in Douglas County to prepare for whenever educators became eligible. So when that announcement was made a week or so ago, we were ready to go and, and have really hit the ground running. So I wanted to let you know this, this is kind of schedule that we have planned. Marietta City Schools is working with Poole's Pharmacy, one of our spectacular partners in this vaccination effort. And later this week, they'll be providing their first dose to their eligible faculty and staff who are interested in getting vaccinated. And then they'll come back again in April for their second dose. Later this week, we're also working, Public Health is working with Douglas County School System to vaccinate almost 2,000 of their faculty and staff. And then on the 19th and 20th and 26th and 27th of March, Cobb and Douglas Public Health will be working with the Cobb County School District nurses to vaccinate about 10,000 Cobb County school staff at our Jim Miller Park drive-through. That's going to be a heavy lift, but we're very excited about being able to get all of our faculty and staff of the school system vaccinated. And then not to leave out any of our childcare or pre-K or private K through 12 individuals, either Public Health or Metro Atlanta Ambulance or Poole's Pharmacy or other providers in the community have linked with many, many of those agencies to help assure that in the next few weeks that their staff can get vaccinated. And at any time, any of the individuals in any of these agencies can always link into any provider and get an appointment wherever they choose to get vaccinated. So whether that is through Kroger or Publix or Public Health and our drive-through, they don't have to wait for these special events, but we wanted to make sure that these special events were available to them. Okay, next slide. We also have been rocking with our mobile vaccination efforts. Dr. Memark and Dr. Jackson had kicked that off earlier, a month or two ago. And we have a staff that's scheduling and working with Cobb Senior Services with some of our churches and going out to those locations to vaccinate, either through a drive-through setting or in an in-clinic, in-person setting, to make sure that we're reaching our most vulnerable residents. We've got a great system in place through the senior services and some of our staff to be able to find those residents, particularly our seniors, who don't have access to computers or who have some challenges with transportation and be able to get them into some of these mobile events. So we're excited, and we'll continue to do that. That team is continuing to schedule at least a couple of events every week to do outreach. Next slide. And now, I feel like this is like the breaking news of the week. We are so excited. I, I don't know about you, but this almost brought tears of joy to my eyes when this came out yesterday. So CDC just released new guidelines that said that folks who are fully vaccinated can visit with other fully vaccinated people indoors without wearing masks or physical distancing. So example, I was, for example, I was in here on Saturday, and our clinical services director came in. And normally, for the past year, anytime any of our staff have interacted, the minute we come in contact, we are making sure that we are fully masked up, and we've done all of our meetings physically distanced or virtually. But Catherine and I started meeting, and we paused for just a minute and realized that we could not have to wear a mask. And so, we, for the first time in a year, conducted a meeting together where we weren't both masks up. So that was exciting. And then, the other benefit is that you can have, vaccinated people can visit with unvaccinated folks from a single household who are at low risk. So for example, where this makes me so excited is imagine two fully vaccinated grandparents who can now visit with their daughter, their healthy daughter, and their healthy grandchildren and not have to wear masks and not have to physically distance. I think that's a game changer at this time and really gives light at the end of the tunnel. And then lastly, for, for folks who have been in contact with others who are positive for COVID and have had to either quarantine or make sure to go get tested within a few days, if you are fully vaccinated, you can, you don't have to quarantine and you don't have to follow up with testing, as long as you remain asymptomatic. And that's an important exception, that if you become symptomatic, you do need to go follow up with the quarantine and the testing. And for the purposes of all of this, I think it's been mentioned before that a person is fully vaccinated two weeks after they get their second dose of a two-dose series, so the Pfizer or Moderna, or two weeks after they've received a single-dose vaccine, like the Johnson &amp; Johnson. But I'm thrilled about this, and I think this really gives a lot of hope, particularly to our seniors who have been isolated over the past year. So, great news from CDC yesterday.
Yeah, and if I could just chime in about that for a second, that although these vaccines are very effective, there is still a chance of breakthrough. So that between 5 and 34% could actually get COVID afterwards and don't have the protection. So I just want to make sure everybody understood that as well, that if you develop any symptoms after having exposure to COVID, even though you're vaccinated, that you should still be thinking about that potentially.
And next slide. Thank you, Dr. Memark. And so, as Dr. Memark was alluding to, there are still some precautions, right? It's not a complete pass to go back to how we were always doing things. Even though I am fully vaccinated or people who are fully vaccinated, they need to continue to wear masks and physically distance when they're out in public. They need to make sure that if they're visiting unvaccinated folks who are increased risk. So for example, if you are a healthcare worker who's fully vaccinated, but you have, like my, if my in-laws are not fully vaccinated, as seniors, they would be more at risk. It wouldn't be wise for me to go into a setting with them without wearing my mask or maintaining that physical distance. We also want to continue to avoid large and medium-sized gatherings. Get tested. As Dr. Memark said, if any, if any symptoms come up, you want to make sure to quarantine immediately and get tested, and then follow guidance for your individual employers. But I am excited about this. I think this is great news from the CDC. Next slide. Also want to make sure that while we are in this high-spread phase that Dr. Memark mentioned to you all, that folks know that we're still putting a priority on testing. So Cobb and Douglas Public Health and our partners with COR and Air National Guard are still offering about 8,500 test options each week, even though we transitioned and made Jim Miller Park a full vaccination site. Some new things have happened in the last few weeks. First of all, we, you can see some of the locations where we are consistently, at least once a week, at these different locations around the county. And then, just a few weeks ago, we launched another testing site in partnership with Mako Labs at Jim Miller Park. So over under the pavilion area, not as part of our vaccination process in the Equestrian Center, but over on the other side of the building, Mako is doing testing. And so, now we're up to probably 12,000-plus test appointments a week that are available to residents. We are certainly not at capacity right now with these test options. So you certainly should be able to get in either the day that you want to be tested or the next day. And the great news is that we're still seeing 24 to 36 hours, actually, of test results on turnaround time. The one difference, I'm sorry, Dr. Memark, the one difference with the Mako Lab at Jim Miller Park is we are taking, the, Mako is taking insurance cards. So don't be surprised about that. That's a little bit of a new twist on some of our sites. If you go to the ones that are noted above with COR and our Air National Guard, we will not be collecting insurance. But at the Mako site at Jim Miller Park, we are collecting insurance, although there is no out-of-pocket payment from any resident. So if you are uninsured, if you have a high deductible or a copay required, none of that will be collected as a result of you going through the Mako Lab. So I would encourage folks to go wherever that's most convenient for them and where they need to get tested. Next slide. So just kind of to wrap up, one, we're, we're excited about more vaccines coming in with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. We're seeing more come into us. It is still kind of like Christmas morning when we wait to see what comes in, because it's not quite everything we order all the time. We do want to encourage all residents to take whichever brand of vaccine you have access to. All of them have excellent effectiveness. All of them will help us get through this pandemic. And so, please, whatever brand of vaccine you have access to, please take that. And then, again, we can't have a presentations yet where we wouldn't end with saying, please, please make sure to still adhere to the three Ws of wearing your mask, watching your distance, washing your hands, and limiting your gatherings of folks outside. Unless you are fully vaccinated, then we say, you know, you can still gather with some small households, but not large gatherings. Dr. Memark, anything else you want to add?
No, thank you.
And just again, to wrap up, Commissioners, thank you so much for all the support that you've provided throughout this pandemic. We are excited that our command trailer has just been delivered this week, that you've supported through the Community Development Block Grant Funds. We also have our new mobile health band, and it's getting wrapped in final stages of that. So we'll be able to get that out into the community. So thank you very much for all the support that you and the staff have provided us ongoing. It's just been exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you two providing this report to us every meeting. It's very helpful, particularly to know that we'll be able to expand the class of those getting vaccinated, especially to our teachers and those with disabilities. Do any Commissioners have any questions this morning? I had one question. How many have we vaccinated here in Cobb thus far? I think I saw it on a slide, but I can't recall. Or how many vaccinations did we administer?
Here in Cobb is 143,463.
Okay, and that includes both first and second doses. Right, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Well, thank you two so much again. I can't wait to be fully vaccinated, so I can comfortably take off my mask and see those unmasked as well. But thank you. We're getting, we're getting there.
Yes, thank you so much.
So with that, we are going to go into the presentations of our agenda. Our first presentation is for there to be a Silver Eagle Award provided on behalf of the Cobb County Management Team.
Good morning, Chairwoman Cupid, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Dr. McMorris. I'm so very excited to be here this morning.
Thank you.
Share some very exciting news. So each year, the Silver Eagle Award is presented to a member of the Cobb County Management Team who has been selected through the management group through an election. The award recognizes a team member who has demonstrated teamwork and exhibited outstanding leaderships through the calendar year of 2020. So I'd like to just read a few comments that we received about this outstanding team member. This manager is a true servant leader. They are always available and put the team first to accomplish the county's goals. With the challenges of 2020, this manager's servant leadership was needed in the ever-changing landscape of the pandemic and their commitment to Cobb County. In 2020 and 2021, there was a, it forced all of us to reevaluate our normal and to be nimble and creative in delivering services. This manager exemplified this and stepped up to the challenge to support all county agencies as we work to provide services through very unusual... as we work to provide services through very unusual circumstances. She is readily available 24/7 during emergency events and is always prepared. She works tirelessly for Cobb County, be related to the pandemic, weather events such as Zeta, and other circumstances that require her expertise. She aids Cobb County in any way, shape, or form, handing out food, supplies, and just offering smiles when we're in stressful situations. So it's my honor and privilege to present the 2020 Silver Eagle Award to Ms. Cassie Maslum.
Deserved.
So Cassie, I'm going to leave your, your award here.
I have to say my mother's, it's Christmas.
While Cassie's giving out hugs, I just, I want to expand on the reasoning for her being awarded this this morning. First of all, I can't tell you how much Cassie stood up, stepped forward during this pandemic to meet the needs of all county employees. Our constitutional officers from the courts to the Sheriff's Department, to our Tax Commissioner's Office, there were no limits in who she reached out to and the impact that she made. She has, no, is not in her vocabulary.
You wish it was.
But I, I don't guess I've ever talked to one single department head near as much as I have Cassie over the last year, but it's because of the drive and motivation that she has to be a servant, to give up everything that she has and to serve others is what motivates her. And so I can't think of anyone more deserving, Cassie. And thank you for all your work and for what you've done for this county. And later on today, you're going to see an example of that, where Cassie has stepped out anticipating the outflow of calls that typically you may not get an answer when you call to get information. And when the governor opens it up for everyone to have a vaccine, a shot, we can imagine the calls that are going to be taking place. And so there's going to be an agenda item this morning that provides a call center for our residents, because that's what we do. We serve our residents, and Cassie is one of those that exemplifies just that. And Cassie, thank you for your servant leadership and for what you've done for this county. Thank you so much.
I don't know what to say. I'm 20 years in Cobb County, and it's honestly, I wouldn't change a thing. It's a great privilege to, to just be part of this management team, because I admire you all so much, and just to be in your company is, is such an honor. And the support that I get, this is my small team. See Kim here, Sydney, Bernard, this is my extended family. I'm with them more than I am my parents. First time I've seen my mother since Christmas. It's hard to give up that kind of time. And sometimes I tell her, I have to stay focused. If I go home, I just want to be that little girl that never goes back. So, you know, when you think about having strength to keep pushing on, sometimes it's just easier to stay in this, this world that we live in. And I couldn't do what I do without these three fantastic people. I mean, we're small, but we're, I think of us like the great facilitators, because we're able to partner with fire and police and information services. And my best buddy Ross Cavit over here, we can get a lot of things done. And I'm just really thankful and grateful for the opportunities this county has given me, and it's an honor to serve.
It's like the Oscars, I didn't pick my husband.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one, and that's enough. Thanks.
All right, we're going to go to our next presentation, and we're going to do the next two a little bit out of order, because we have a special guest here with us for the fifth present, or excuse me, the fourth matter of our agenda, which is to present a certificate of recognition to Girl Scout Gabrielle Tobin of Troop 12412 for earning her Gold Award. And I believe that's going to be presented by Commissioner Richardson this morning.
Thank you, Chair. Gabrielle, are you with us?
Yes.
Fantastic. Well, I just want to say definitely congratulations, and wanted to present this certificate of recognition, a little bit about Gabrielle here. Her parents have always taught her that it's better to give than to receive. And her mom has often said, Gabby, you can change the world, all you need is the faith of a mustard seed and a willing heart. And that planted a, a seed of wanting to continue to give. And so on her 10th birthday, she actually asked for school supply donations instead of gifts. And that also began her, her life mission, which was the idea of creating 40 mustard seeds. And as a part of achieving her Gold Award, which is what she's being recognized for, she asked a few of her friends from her school and church whether they could assist her in making some math tutorials, because she knew that there were a lot of students who were struggling with math, especially due to the pandemic. And so she created these tutorials that were peer-to-peer tutorials, and it took off. It went viral. It went international. And so we wanted to recognize her in earning the Gold Award this past December, all of her work with the videos, her effort, her heart. We believe that this symbolizes everything that Cobb County is, and we want to encourage you to continue to give, and just, just a wonderful woman of distinction and a great representation for Women's History Month. Also, we included her on our commemorative Black History webpage as well for the website. So congratulations, Gabrielle. Do you have any words you want to share?
Yes. First of all, thank you, thank you so much. Earning my Gold Award has been, it's been a phenomenal experience. My service project is titled For Math Safe Peer-to-Peer Videos. And I brainstormed this idea, like you said, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I had a team of two Girl Scout seniors and five other friends, and we created 13 math videos based on the sixth grade curriculum. The videos are used by teachers as a refresher during class, and they are also used by students to work individually, to master in a certain area. And they are currently being used, as you said, locally, nationally, and globally, especially in the Bahamas via my math app. And currently, they are being translated into Spanish and will soon be available on my, on my current URL. And now I've started my own foundation to further expand the math videos and my leadership skills. And the website to my foundation is, it's called 40mustardseeds.com. Thank you.
Fantastic, and what an amazing, amazing story. Please give her her due.
And one other question. May I take a picture of the meeting to document for my, for my final report?
Sure, I, sure, I suppose so. I'm looking at Chair for any guidance.
Definitely. I, I don't know what this consists of virtually, this is all so new. Okay, our count, or excuse me, our communications manager is taking our picture, and I believe he will get that to you, so you can have that for your records.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, you truly are a shining star. All right, we're going to move on to our next presentation. We have the American Red Cross here with us, and I will be providing them a proclamation.
We are getting re-acclimated to this, as we had stalled our presentations in person due to the higher rates that we had of COVID. So I appreciate you two being here today, and in fact, Red Cross's role in us helping to address the pandemic here in Cobb County. I'm not going to read this in its entirety, I will allow you to do that, but I do want to highlight some matters that are in our proclamation that are worthwhile. In March 2021, we are proud to celebrate American Red Cross's 140th anniversary of its founding by the Angel of the Battlefield, Ms. Clara Burton. March is known as American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need in Cobb across the nation and around the world. During the COVID-19 pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to the record-breaking disasters across the U.S. or rolling up their sleeves to give blood when our county faced a severe blood shortage. In 2020, Red Cross assisted 524 Cobb residents affected by disaster, with 457 of those suffering fires. Volunteers helped them address urgent needs like food, lodging, and recovery support. The organization also facilitated 19,795 blood donations in Cobb County and helped 854 Cobb military families. And in 2020, the Red Cross trained 1,384 Cobb residents in safety courses. Local families rely on the 270 volunteers who proudly support Cobb and faithfully serve to strengthen our county. Thus, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Red Cross Month. We are thankful for our faithful volunteers and encourage all residents to support the Red Cross's humanitarian mission of caring for all people in need. Thank you. We have this proclamation for you today. Yes, can we thank them for their service? Any words? Okay, we're going to take a picture, we're going to take a picture.
Me in the middle?
It's a bit of a dip here.
Moving right along, we are going to head into our public hearing. We have a public hearing, which will be presented by Cobb County Finance to establish a contract with a consulting firm to provide federal legislative consulting services for Cobb County.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioner, County Manager. On January 26, the Board of Commissioners authorized the advertisement for, advertisement and to conduct a public hearing to establish a contract with consulting firm to provide federal legislative consulting services for Cobb County. Today, we're asking the Board to conduct that public hearing, and at this time, we'd ask that you open it, if unless you have any comments or questions.
Do any commissioners have any comments or questions before we get started? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead, and we will call this public hearing open. When we have a public hearing, anyone from the audience can speak regarding this matter, and they will have up to three minutes to do so. So if anyone is here to speak to this Legislative Consulting Service hearing, by all means, please stand up and come forward. All right, seeing that there's no one here for the public hearing, I'll now call this public hearing closed. Is there any additional action needed?
Not at this time, we're, we're good. We just had to conduct the public hearing, and we're going through the bid process now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move into public comment for today.
Chairwoman, we have four people who signed up for public comment this morning.
Thank you.
The first one is Gerald, I'm sorry, is Lonzo or Lunno?
We will have him help us to pronounce his name when he comes up this morning.
Sorry.
Thank you. You don't mind, sir? When you do approach us here, just tell us your first and last name, and then you can...
You're right over here, sir.
Yes, right here at our dais? You're on that hot mic, the one that's glowing red.
And sir, there's, there's a timer that's on there, you have five minutes to speak.
Yes, good morning.
Gerald Long.
Okay, very good.
And my concern today is I am here for the rent assistance.
Yes, sir.
I'm a resident of Sierra Forest Apartment, have been there for 10 years, and have been a model tenant, and out of 10 years, maybe once or twice late, if that. And I received a letter on my door that I was $5,000 in arrears on rent. And I was working for 15 years at MSC Industry, and with the advent of the coronavirus, it was heavily infected with the virus and had even been on news about it. And I am a custodian, and custodians is one of the most dangerous jobs that you could have with the coronavirus, this is our society at this time. And so at that time, by the grace of God, I was allowed to do a early buyout, because MSC was offering people opportunities to buy out early. And 2010, I went through a radical prostatectomy, which is prostate cancer surgery. I have high blood pressure, prediabetic. And so I am, at the time, I was 65 years old, and I saw that there would be me in the high category range of people that would be more susceptible to contracting the coronavirus. And so I took the buyout, and, you know, just by the grace of God, that I was allowed to collect Social Security at the time, that if I would have remained at MSC at 66, you can work as much as you want to and still collect your full benefits. So I put my health over my finances, and I chose to take the early buyout and leave MSC. Immediately upon me doing that, I went up to my rent office, and I told my property manager what the situation was. Now, mind you again, I've been a faithful tenant, model tenant, paid my rent on time, 80% of the time, I had a credit. And so when I told him that, he said there were some programs that was out there. So he gave me an application to fill out, and I did. And then I was checked with him, I mean, on basically, by daily basis or at least three times a week, and he assured me that everything was taken care of. So time lapsed, and this was in November, that was the last time I paid my rent. So time lapsed, and I didn't hear anything, I didn't see any notes, but I would check periodically and see, everything was fine. And so then I received this letter in my door that I was $5,000 on rent. And I have my receipts from when I came in, moved in in '10. I was familiar with the properties from 23 years prior to that, because... from 23 years prior to that because I had friends that were living out there and I would visit the properties. And so in that, in 2010, I had separation from my wife. And so I went and I viewed the properties and I saw that they were in good condition, you know, and they had advertisement under new management, remodel, free water for a $5.49 a month. And so I said, well, okay, I can afford that and I can get a two-bedroom apartment, so in the event that my children need someplace to reside, then I will be able to do that. And so that's what I did. And so as the time went on, you know, it was a pretty nice community at the time, but as time escalated, I don't know, it was the advent of a lot of gentrification or closing of public housing now, it started de-escalating. We started seeing more crime out there. And at the same time, I still maintained my residency, paid my rent on time, and I think I say it again, I was a model tenant, never no problem out of me, you know, constantly having police out there. And so I'm just saying that I don't see how that CFORs would not be more proactive about their properties. I mean, they didn't call me and say, well, sir, would you like to, you know, in 2010, it was the advent of the first economic, so the rent went down. Now with this, with coronavirus, they're not offering any type of help, you know, they're not going to bring the rent down to tennis of my magnitude, you know, I've been faithful, I've been on time.
Mr. Long, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
Monica Delancey.
Thank you again for allowing for opportunity to speak. Congratulations to all of our women leaders. Yesterday, you celebrated international leadership Women's Month, Women's Month, and I wanted to just, I did see the article in the paper, that was a very nice article with you young ladies. Yes, so just to reiterate a little bit what Mr. Long said, he's been living in the area for 10 years, 10 years, and just think about how much rent he's paid to a business that he's not going to be able to pass down to his children, you know? As a homeowner, you pay, you spend that money paying property tax or whatever, but you could pass down inheritance, but you cannot as a renter. So it's very important that he came here today not only to articulate his concerns about Sierra Forest, their changing management and not getting the application through for his rental assistance, but he also wants just to reiterate how he's a committed person in the community. And just like he said, he's been there 10 years, I've been here 13 years as a renter and I calculated them out. I spent $100,000 for 13 years as a renter. And again, being an engaged renter, being specifically engaged, that's one of the, make sure that we know the importance of renters, especially when you're talking about the South Cobb community, where you have 40% of your residents that are renters. Just think about, not only are there apart, I guess the apartment complex is a business. I don't know in any business where anybody go and spend $1,000 a month, you don't spend that at Krogers or Walmart, but we spend it at the apartment complex. And so when they're talking about investors, they should ask the renters, do you want to invest in this property? Some of the people that's getting on the property, they're not spending $10,000 to get in. So they should ask the renters, would you like to invest, you know, in this property before they pass it on to somebody else? Just want to say that. Also, solutions about eviction preventions that's coming up, I know the moratorium may not be extended, but it's not even about that, it's about the fact that this rental assistance is a Band-Aid fit. For the most part, it's going to help out, it's not going to help everybody, and it might only last six months, eight months, 10 months, whatever. So we would like to be a part of the solutions, to offer some solutions to, to be able to keep people in their homes beyond the rental assistance. And if somebody shows up in eviction court, and they show up in eviction court and they say they've been staying on a property for 10 years, somebody should ask that property, why are you filing eviction on someone that's been staying on your property for 10 years? I would hate that happens. And so I'm hoping that maybe we can have this discussion with Cobb County Master Court to do a checklist, say, why are you filing eviction on someone that's pretty much, it's almost the owner of your property, you know, if you think about that. Then I know I've been sending emails back and forth, I know Commissioner Cupid, thanks for calling, Chairwoman Cupid from last week acknowledging that the emails have been going back and forth and it has not gone, some concerns we have was that one of the firms that were hired to oversee the distribution of the money, which was WFN, we noticed on the website that the leadership team, they're employees of Cobb County Development Department. So we were concerned, how is it that they're on the leadership team for WFN, they're going to receive $400,000 to oversee the grant, but yet they're also employed with Cobb County? So I never got an answer on that. And also, there's some confusion going back and forth on if one apartment complex is already working with one agency, then if somebody applies for, you know, assistance with much ministries and they live in a property that's working with Star C, they cannot get the assistance through Star C. So we need some clarification on that as well. And I want to close out with speaking about Georgia Power, I do want to recognize them, their community engagement team. Last Friday, a young lady called me, she called, she was crying on the phone, saying her son was in virtual learning and her lights were shut off. And she needed to know, how could she get assistance to get her lights turned back on so that she can, her son can continue back in class? So immediately for me going to meetings with Ms. Odessa and also I emailed Ms. Odessa and she had one of her coworkers call me, I told them, I said, yes, I know the young lady owes $500, we're going to do 100. She went to Talatuna, Talatuna pledged 400, we don't know why it didn't go there yet, but can you please help us get this young man back in class? Within two hours, Georgia Power had him back on. So I just want to make sure to acknowledge that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Randall Beddgood.
My name is Randall Beddgood and I live in District One and I want to make some remarks this morning. And I don't want anybody to take these remarks as criticism about any one person, purposely not calling any names. And the thing I want, I don't have much time, I know, and I got a lot to go over. And one thing I want you to concentrate on, I hope you know about the general fund, what the millage rate of it is, what the park fund is, how it's, the millage rate is applied on that, and how the splash works, okay? If you have any questions after, I'll be glad to answer or you can get in touch with me later on. Every year when the budget discussion starts, the topic you will have is how parking, how the parking deck has not generated enough revenue to meet the bond payment and that the shortfall will have to be met out of the general fund. The law that created the splash has a provision that allows excess splash to be used to pay off bonded indebtedness. Use part of the excess splash funds to pay off the parking deck. It's somewhere south of $8 million, it's probably about $7 million. You need to talk to your county manager and your finance director, that bond is set up, it really wasn't set up to advantage of the county. You need to look at the interest rate, how many years you've got to pay for that and how it balloons at the end of the, I think it's the last five years, how that thing balloons, the payments do, and it's going to create a real hardship on the county. And then you can take the rest of the $100 million and divide it up amongst the other departments. Okay, now you've got the park bond. The park bond will be paid off this year, the park bond and the fire fund are outside the floating homestead exemption, unlike the general fund millage rate. The fire fund and the park fund get a windfall each year, the tax digest increases, whether it's through an increase in the appraised value by the tax assessor or new construction. And the Public Safety Director, and like I said, correct me if I'm wrong on this because I'm trying to remember back when this happened, the Public Safety Director wants the whole 1.5 mil added to the existing fire fund. If I am correct, when the park bond was established, only 3/10 of a mil was taken from the fire fund and my suggestion would be to give the fire fund back its 3/10 of a mil, take the remaining 1.2 mils and split it into two new funds outside of the floating homestead exemption. That way you'll get money, that fund will increase every year because of increase in the tax valuation and new construction. Split that in tons, take one of them and put it into the pension fund to help make it solid. Because every year when you have the budget, you're going to find out you're going to have to kick in money for the pension fund's not supporting itself. Take the other part and let it go into a fund for employee raises, to catch these employees up that have so long been ignored. And I'm not talking about the Fire and Police Department, I'm talking about the other employees. And you could let that be a fund that could continue on, you could build that fund up and you could use that to finance the employees' raises in perpetuity, really, if you get enough funds in there. You can't go crazy and delete it every year, give out raises crazy, but when the Fire Department and Police Department get a 7% raise and the other employees get no raise, you know, that's not fair, never has been. All right, well, two years ago, I think it was two years ago, Superior Court Judges sent a representative to the Board to ask for a 4% raise in their salaries. The judges are paid by the state and get their raises from the state legislator. The legislator also authorizes the county to pay an additional supplement, the amount is set by the legislators. The judge's representative not only asked for illegal raises on their state salary, but also on the county supplement. All Commissioners on the Board at that time voted for the illegal raises. That was brought to the attention of the Commissioners at the next board meeting.
Mr. Beddgood, sorry, your time's up.
And it was repealed. But you need to look into that, they're also on the retirement fund and are not paying into the retirement.
Mr. Beddgood, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
Quantina Scott.
My name is Quantina Scott. I sent an email out to, to local, to Board of Commissioners as well as some local organizations. I have a personal situation as well as a group situation. There are 30 to 60 tenants who stay at my apartment complex, the Life at West Cobb. The manager did not turn in applications for assistance before the deadline for the COVID funding. People will not be able to receive that assistance because the deadline has come and it's closed now, where they had to send back the funding for a lot of the organizations. I submitted personally my application to her for rental assistance on February the 12th. She sat on her hands, you know, she did what she could do, but it didn't get submitted in a timely manner. We did meet with the property manager yesterday, a group of tenants, their resolution boiled down to basically for the residents to go ahead and seek assistance through local organizations to see what they could do first, and should a tenant not be able to get assistance, that they would go ahead and step in and see what they could do. I know for a fact that I did qualify for rental assistance because I had qualified for it previously and I had additional funding that I still had access to. I want to shed light on this issue because there could be several property owners who are doing this, you know, where tenants are actually submitting application for assistance and then they're not following through, which could result in evictions. I would like to have some type of transparency moving forward, not only with apartment complexes, but also with some of the organizations. If a person is to be denied, they need to be told why they are being denied, denied because of income hardship, denied because they don't have proper documentation to give that person, excuse me, opportunity to go back and get whatever they may need to resubmit. It shouldn't boil down to these organizations making money off of applications and then people being denied and not knowing why. There are men who need assistance so that they can help support their families. It's not just about women and children, the children didn't get here without the man. And that goes for all, you know, nationalities, all races, men need help. You know, some parents are, some fathers are custodial parents of their children and they need help. So this funding for rental assistance shouldn't just be geared towards helping women and children. The men need help too so that they can support their families. The age group between 45 and 54, they need help with assistance. They can't get senior assistance because they're, they fall short. Some of the guidelines for single families, some of their, some of the parents' children are grown, so they're no longer a single parent, so they kind of fall between the gaps. They need help. Nothing happens by chance. It's not a chance that, it's not a coincidence that we are all here in this room today. We are all here by choice and by choices that we made and decisions that we have made. I'm here because of decisions that I had made in my life that had led me to this moment. And for each one of you that are on this board, there has been decisions that you have made in your life that has led you to this point where you are right now, that you are on this board. You guys all have the power, you have the skills, the leadership, you guys are embodied with everything you need to help move Cobb County into a better direction. You guys have it. I see it by the manager who received that beautiful award, you guys have it. So I hope that you guys continue to work unifiably, to be able to work together to help take Cobb County into the next, to the next level, and I hope that I could be a part of that. I hope after this meeting that somebody can come and share with me about who can help assist with these tenants and also I want to include another property, the Wendy Hill as well, they need assistance as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, that concludes our public comment.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We are going to move now into the consent tab of our agenda. It's my understanding that we have some items that have been pulled. The consent agenda was scrolled on the screen prior to the meeting and will be immediately thereafter. Consent item number six and consent item number 29 have been pulled and consent number 20 has been moved from the consent agenda to the public safety tab of our agenda and will be heard later on during this meeting. So with that, I move that we approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one clarification, number 29 was not on consent, it was a regular agenda item.
Okay, thank, you're right, that number 29 does fall outside of that. It is actually removed from the agenda and thank you for that clarification, Commissioner. With that, there's been a motion and I believe there's been a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as revised, please raise your hand. The consent agenda passes 5-0. Thank you. With that, we are going to move to the next agenda item or next tab, excuse me, scroll over here, which will be our regular agenda, item number 27. Item number 27.
Good morning.
Good morning, Debbie Blair with the County Attorney's Office. I'm here to present item 27, which is an extension to the Home Free Mortgage Assistance Program. This is an extension of time only, it does not affect, there's no additional funding that is a part of this request. As you all are aware, back July 2020, the board approved mortgage assistance for Cobb citizens through Home Free. They currently are existed, or the program will run through March 31st. This agenda item is to extend that availability of funding through June 30th of this year. If there's any questions?
Okay, any questions from the commissioners? All right, Commissioner Gamble, would you like to make the motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our public safety tab, we have one item.
Good morning, commissioners, county manager. The sheriff and I have one item to present this morning. And the purpose of this agenda item is to approve a FY 2021 merit slash step increase for eligible full-time staff. As a little bit of background, in July of last year, or actually in March of 2020, the board approved an implementation of a public safety pay plan, including a step plan for hourly sworn positions and that was effective March of 2020. The FY 2021 budget included funding for the first step slash merit increase for this plan to be effective in March of 2021. So the recommendation today is that the Board of Commissioners approve an FY 2021 merit slash step increase as summarized below. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute any necessary documents. And there's three bullet points under recommendations. First of all, this would be effective March 21st of this month and would be seen on the employee's paycheck April 9th. It would include all full-time sworn positions in the step plan, excluding those serving in a working test period for classifications of deputy sheriff 1, firefighter 1, and police officer 1. These employees that will get this will have a performance appraisal on file with Human Resources as of January 31st, 2021, for the 2020 rating period that reflects an overall rating of meets or exceeds and have been employed as a, as of October 1, 2020, those people will receive a step increase. It will also include all full-time sworn positions not in the step plan with a performance appraisal on file with Human Resources as of January 31st, 2021, for the 2020 rating period that reflects an overall rating of meets or exceeds and employed as of October 1, 2020, those will receive a 3% of market control point for their range.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion for agenda item number 28?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
Okay, Director Carter, I know that there's been a lot of confusion on this, so I just want to clarify for the audience as well. When we approved this and the initial step program was implemented, it did not necessarily put the employee into the correct step where they should have been based on the chart that we had been provided, correct?
They were placed in a step among, upon implementation, they were placed in a step just above what their current pay was for their given rank.
Right, but it did necessarily reflect their years of service.
That's correct.
So essentially, we know there is compression and what we are doing today does not address the compression.
It does not.
That we know exists within the ranks.
That's correct.
Thank you for verifying.
Yes, Commissioner Burl.
We know that it's going to take more than a year to correct the compression, but this is what was approved in the current budget and it's been approved last year for, it was supposed to start in fiscal year in October when the fiscal year started and we've put it off till March. But with your, when you walked the halls and talked with all of us, the three-year plan moving forward will eventually get us out of the compression. But this is a step and a sustainable step for what we passed last year.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? Thank you, with that, we have a motion, we've had a second and discussion. All those in favor of this agenda item, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0, thank you. Next we will-
I guess y'all didn't want to hear from the sheriff today, right? I was just kidding.
Exactly.
I think it is an absolute step in the right direction for us and I think, thank you all for doing it for us. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate your presence. I get concerned when I see one elected official, I hope I didn't miss or miss any other elected official that may be here today, it's so hard to see people when we're wearing masks. With that, we're going to move to agenda item number 20, which was moved from the consent agenda.
Good morning, chairwoman, commissioners, and county manager. Our item this morning is a collaboration with Cobb Douglas Public Health, who's still available on this call this morning, and Information Services requesting the Board of Commissioners authorize a contract for the establishment of a COVID-19 vaccination call center and the procurement for the 311 customer relationship management software under provisions of the State of Georgia contract with Carisoft Technology Corporation. As the vaccination becomes more available to more of our public, the demand to answer questions, schedule appointments, and provide additional outreach will drastically increase. The call center will ensure that Cobb citizens receive the most up-to-date information, available appointments, and guidance on how they can continue to remain safe in this pandemic. EMA requests the approval of a contract to establish the COVID-19 vaccination call center, authorize corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second? I'll second that. Any discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Gamble.
Okay, I know yesterday I had requested data and from the information, the email you provided, you couldn't break down the data as far as the COVID-19 calls received. So I find this hard to justify a $2 million expenditure when it hasn't been included in our budget, when we don't have the supporting data to go behind that. To further that point, I know several sites have been come up. I've done speaking engagements, I've asked the questions. Out of 30 people, only one person went through Cobb Douglas Public Health. The rest of them are going through Piedmont, Wellstar. Even the drugstores are calling to schedule people for their vaccinations. In addition to that, GEMA and HSA announced that they are going to be doing a mass vaccination site up at Lake Point and people can go on the website and provide information today and get registered and scheduled out in the future. So at this time, I do not see this as a viable expenditure.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion, Commissioner Burl?
I feel differently in that this will be an asset to the county as a whole with public health, partnering with public health. As you know, we're getting ready or have just gone into Phase 2B with, or Phase 1B with teachers and disabilities and additional eligible recipients. So we still haven't finished with the 65 and older and first responders in the Phase 1A category.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're still getting a lot of calls and emails even though the governor has opened up five more sites in addition to the four regional that were throughout the state locations for vaccine. So I'm on board with this and it is CAREZAC money, it's not budgeted money. And COVID has thrown a lot of emergency situations at us this past year and we're still in it, so I support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Burl. Do any of the other commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Richardson?
Just, yeah, I think that this is a very forward-thinking initiative personally, but to address some of the ideas or points considered, brought up. It is my understanding that we would be in the position to ensure that those that reach out to the county, we can connect them with a proper location that is not just specified through one entity, but across the board, around the county and that that service would be comprehensive.
Right. And just to clarify, what the commissioner is saying is that we hope, once, if this is approved, we'll be able to put as much information into this system that's available, that's available to us. So wherever a vaccine location is available, those, that information would be there. It's just as Dr. Memark and Lisa Crossman spoke of this morning. We don't care where you get a test, we just want you to know where it is and all the options that are available to you. So if we don't have it here in Cobb and it's somewhere else or somewhere further for them to go, that information would be there, so it will be as vital as what we put there. We did, I wanted to also say in the beginning, we did have a call center in the EOC when COVID started and we did have, I do have tracking sheets of that, but that's also staff extensive. My staff is small and we were, had public safety personnel that came and helped us man those phones and if you, I know you all remember when the stipulations were on the public that they couldn't, you know, get a haircut or they couldn't go into certain businesses, we did have a lot of calls. So those were fielded from our office and with the help of communications staff. So this is definitely an advancement that would help us and who knows what the future holds with this. So the opera, at least gives us a platform to look at other disasters coming from an emergency management standpoint. Just because we had the vaccination doesn't mean I won't have a tornado that hits us that we have major damage. So the call volume at that point's even, you know, tripled. If people's appointments are delayed, even though they're home standing safely, they want their vaccine, but that doesn't mean we can give it. So any kind of delay that would impact that, this will alleviate the frustration of our citizens and provide them with a more comfortable and reliable experience.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to add- I just want to give- Oh, sorry. That's okay, we have three mics go on at the same time. I want to give you the opportunity to provide comments since you have not already and then we'll go back to the other commissioners.
Now, I just wanted to add that I think that it's a great initiative to get in front of the calls. And while I know that we may not be that inundated, but I fully expect that that will increase, especially when we open the vaccine to a broader base. And how are the calls currently being handled?
So currently, we, depends on the, so for instance, with the citizens that are taking advantage of the senior services support that we've gotten vaccinations from, those calls are fielded from senior services staff themselves. So the other formats are based upon, if they're going to a GEMA site, GEMA has their own platform for them to register. This would be sort of a one-stop shop to where that guesswork, that's where a lot of the frustration comes in. People are like, they know it's there, but where do they go?
Sure.
And then they're calling, the lines that we have for communication to the public is 528-1000, which Director Cabot's folks has three part-time staff that do answer those calls. So it's either that, the 3900 number that goes to our police headquarters, our headquarters site, and also 3911, which can also burden our 911 staff who should be dedicating most of their time for emergency calls.
So the calls essentially will go to a centralized location?
Yes.
For that efficiency? Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Burl, and then we'll go to Commissioner Richardson.
If this is approved today, Cassie, when would this go into effect, once the contracts are all final and?
Once the, then once the contract is finalized, if the board approves, then we have a four-week period where we will work diligently to get this open by the first week of April so that we can, we're trying to beat or be ahead of when the governor opens up another group of people to receive that vaccination. So hopefully by the first of April, we'll be, we'll be live.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Richardson? I'm sorry, is there an additional response virtually?
Yeah. Hi, Chairman, if I could just add, also, one of the things that we're very concerned about here at Cobb Douglas is some of our vulnerable communities that internet access and just maneuvering the system is very, very difficult. And we've gotten a lot of calls about that and we anticipate that's going to increase as this goes on. And so, you know, we've got a list right now of at least, at least 50, 60 homebound folks that need assistance as well. And so this is definitely a group effort and I feel like having a centralized place that people can call and get some information and resources that we can all kind of tie together. And it's not just about the vaccines, but definitely that's, that's part of it. But just getting some reliable information and being able to find other resources is extremely helpful as well.
Thank you, appreciate that, Dr. Memark. Commissioner Richardson?
Just going to say, considering the difference in jurisdiction of the Department of Public Health and the County Commission, the community has been asking for that utility to be able to contact one and know that as a Cobb County resident, they are being served because they're not aware of the different jurisdictions. And from what we are trying to accomplish here, this is a step in that direction of a true partnership between the state and the county to ensure that our residents have easy access to all of the available options. And, you know, just really, really happy to see the Department of Public Health here as well asking for this agenda item and knowing that a lot of the work going into implementation setup is to have that combined routing so that, I know I've had several constituents call in saying they'll call and it just keeps ringing. And it just keeps ringing. So I just want to commend the effort on that.
Thank you.
And good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
To interrupt the discussion just briefly, my name is Marion Adamey, I'm with the County Attorney's Office. As just a technicality with regard to your motion on this matter, we would ask that the board amend the motion slightly if you're seeking to look to approve this so that there are some contract terms that are still being negotiated and finalized. And so the County Attorney's Office would like an opportunity to complete that process. If the motion could be subject to a final contract form to be reviewed and approved by the County Attorney's Office, that would give us an opportunity to finalize those terms. And I'm happy to answer questions about that.
Okay, I'm just jotting that down.
That is at the end of this agenda item.
Okay, I wonder if it's on a revision.
I could just amend, I could just revise my motion
Thank you.
to approve and with the revised remarks on here.
Okay, as revised. And thank you, Commissioner, yes.
That would be fine.
Does our county clerk have that revision, thank you. Appreciate that, I just want to echo the sentiments.
And whoever was the second needs to agree.
Yes, second, I agree, thank you, Commissioner. I agree with a lot of the comments that have been shared here today. We have been fielding a lot of calls and also criticism of a number of our constituents who have not been able to get vaccinated because of the complexity of having to go online and literally wait or continue trying and refresh up until early morning hours to try to get vaccinated. And we also have a number of citizens who do not have access to technology. And looking at the COVID death numbers that the Department of Public Health provided us a couple of weeks ago, 85% of our deaths are of persons 60 and older. And if you were to take out of those between 60 and 69, 69% of our deaths are those 70 and older. And if you consider people in your family, those persons are less likely to be familiar with technology and know how to navigate that. And they will probably are most likely to become frustrated if they're making calls and aren't able to reach someone. So I think we have some responsibility to make sure that we are making our vaccinations accessible to all who are here in Cobb. And I think we have some responsibility to make sure we're- we have some responsibility to make sure we're doing what we can on the front end, because our, we know that we will have citizens criticize us as the phases grow if we only respond on the back end. And as much as I love the fire department here, I don't always want to be a firefighter as I'm serving on the Board of Commissioners. There's some things that we need to get in front of, because if we don't, we will continue to have deaths which will also add cost burden to the county, as well as other burden that cannot be monetized. So with that, I am supportive of this agenda item and ask for the Commissioner's support for us to move this forward, as we know the phases are expanding. We had a motion, a second, and discussion. All those in favor of this agenda item, please raise your hand. The motion passes. Excuse me, I'm sorry, thank you so much. We have four who are in agreement or who approve this motion. Any of those who are opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you. We have Commissioner Gamble, opposed, the motion passes 4-1, recognizing Commissioner Gamble's opposition. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we are now going to our transportation tab of the agenda.
Yes, ma'am, good morning again.
Thank you, good morning.
Transportation has five items for the board's consideration. Our first item for consideration is requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of intelligent transportation system network equipment in an amount not to exceed $61,871.85 for the upgrade of advanced transportation management systems.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our second item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $126,500 for drainage system repairs on Heritage Trace Drive.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved.
Second. All, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item for consideration is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC, a no-cost time extension through June 30th of 2021 for operational improvements on Factory Shoals Road.
Commissioner Sheffield?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a reimbursable contract for acquisition of Ridaway with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Bob Callen Trunk Trail Phase Two, Segment B, State PI Number 0012808. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents to include necessary quitclaim deeds to Georgia DOT for Ridaway certification.
All right. Commissioner Richardson?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Commissioner Gamble has a comment?
Okay, I cannot support this. I know this is a, a long discussion with the county and a debate with many, but this program, this project was not around prior to the 2005 SPOS being approved by the voters. I understand it became a viable project because the board back on March 25th of 2014 voted to make it so. I do not agree that is correct, and therefore I cannot support this agenda item.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to that, or do any commissioners have any additional comments or response? Commissioner Richardson?
It's my understanding that this project comes out of the general trails bucket, and so therefore it is to the discretion of the department to identify projects that are with, that are qualified, and that was consistent with legal's opinion as well.
Yes, I believe there's a bucket for pedestrian improvement.
In the 2005 program, there is a multi-use trail component.
Okay.
And actually in 2011, March of 2011, Georgia DOT, the Board of Commissioners approved a PFA and a CFA with Georgia DOT and Cumberland CID for the Bob Callen Trail Phase Two. And then further later on, I think it was in 13, we split that into the Phase 2A and the Phase 2B.
Okay, thank you.
However, we, we do know we want to close this program out quickly, because it has been a little long for the 05 program. So we are working to transition this project from a SPOS project and back into a general fund project, even though the funds are transferred from Georgia DOT or the Cumberland CID as pass-through dollars from Cobb County, just to clean that up so we can close this program as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, all in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. Okay, we have four who are supportive. All those in opposition, please raise your hand. Thank you. The motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you, ma'am. And our last item for consideration is requesting that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings, proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA 32-3-4. Authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on 11 parcels on Canton Road Corridor, adopt resolutions and orders in form substantially similar to the attached and approved as by the County Attorney's Office, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl?
Thank you. Yes, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Just one thing.
Sure.
Just want the parcels, the owners to know that we are working diligently. We've had several meetings and working to try to avoid condemnation and make that a last resort.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We have the motion pass 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
With that, we are moving on to our public services tab.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
County Manager. Our first item this morning is for the board to approve a contract with WE Contracting Group in an amount not to exceed $176,150 to renovate and improve the upper concession restroom building at Lyons Park under the 2011-2016 Park SPOS program. We ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the contract, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Yes, Commissioner Sheffield?
Well, Michael and I have had conversations about the entire property, but that's for another day. But I, I do approve this. I understand that the funding will, this will come out of the revenue above projection funding, or SPOS?
No.
This is SPOS.
SPOS, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, I, I approve item, agenda item number 35, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes, I, I know those that frequent this park will appreciate it, as this is a facility that certainly needs improvement.
Absolutely.
So with that, we've had a motion and second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Our second and final item is for the board to approve change order number one final to the contract with Southern A&amp;E LLC for professional design and construction administration services for the Hyde Farm Operations Barn. This item results in a $3,065 credit for the project from the 2016 SPOS program. We ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the document, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson?
Oh, Hyde Farm, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. No discussion, Commissioner? I see this, I.
I believe it, I believe it for later, Mr. Michael.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I didn't see all the hands that went up. Let's do that again. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Very good. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we are moving to our support services tab.
Good morning, Chairwoman.
Good morning.
County Manager. Property management's got one item. It's the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number two to the contract with Catamount Constructors Incorporated in the amount of $30,000 for additional work related to the new fleet car service facility, a 2006 program XO 911. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Appreciate it. All righty, we are moving along. Next to our county manager tab, we have agenda item number 38.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. Our item this morning for the board to authorize the increase of 2016 SPOS budgets for eligible county department projects based on revenue collections above projections. The program for the 2016 SPOS was approved by the Board of Commissioners on July 22nd of 2014, and then by the Cobb County Voters on November 4th of 2014. Historically, Cobb County is conservative in estimating projected revenues to ensure project funding is available even in the face of dire economic times. The projected program revenue has been surpassed, and additional funding is needed for some projects identified in the 2016 SPOS program. Eligible, eligible departments submitted their requests, and a series of meetings were held to reduce their overall request to within the revenue above projection budget. The list of projects was presented to the Board of Commissioners during your retreat in January and during a work session on February 23rd of this year. And subsequent meetings were held with each of the Commissioners to go through the list. And then the county clerk provided you with a finalized list on Friday, along with the three-page funding statement for this item. Of course, I'm available to answer any of your questions, but first, we ask the Board of Commissioners to authorize the allocation of 2016 SPOS revenues above projections, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion? I'll make it. So moved. Is there a second? Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Gamble?
Okay, I find the word conservative interesting here. As many of you know, I have an issue with the $6.1 million a mile for the Chattahoochee River line sidewalks. We have a project out in District One that was promoted or proposed to our constituents back in 2018, in April actually, and it was never started because the project expanded in scope. We are now told we need to wait for tip money, and that project now will not start until 2024, 2025. This project moves 30,000 individuals a day, yet we're not allocating any of the revenue over projections to that project to start it today. So I find conservative very interesting, and also the priorities of the board.
Thank you. I just want some clarification. Was there not discretion for Commissioners to move money to projects as part of this? And?
Yes, during the, whenever the, the departments went and met with each one of the Commissioners, they did take down individual requests for Commissioners to either add to the list or delete from the list. What you have in front of you is a, is a synthesized or, or put-together list of, of all the different requests. There are a couple below on the last page. These are a couple of additional requests that, in trying to balance out the, the, the amount of money that we had, the Canton Road at Piedmont Road, sidewalks, and then the South Cobb Gateway. But of course, it is the board's final decision. If you'd like for us to insert those in place of a project, we do not have the luxury of adding to the 114,616,638. But if you'd like for us to plug and play, plug and remove, we can do that.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gamble, I know you were going to respond, but you referred to a project. Was that an eligible project for the revenue above projections?
It was a project on Tier One of the 2016 SPOS.
Okay.
So therefore it is eligible.
Okay.
I did have extensive discussions with Erica and Drew about this. And as far as how this list was prioritized for District One, pretty much the list was brought to me and said, this is what we're going to do.
Okay.
Again, I tried to suggest other items that I thought needed to be addressed, but again, there wasn't funding because of how DOT had presented it. Therefore, my unwillingness to support this.
Okay. So, yes, would you like to respond?
I could.
Thank you.
So, so the project that, that we're speaking of is Dallas.
I'm sorry, can you help him coming just a little bit closer to the mic?
Okay. So, so the project we're speaking of is Dallas High Morris Hill and Lost Mountain Road.
Yes.
It probably is close to $7 million, I think, was the gap that, that we had requested through the Atlanta Regional Commission for federal funding on that project. Funding has been allocated and identified through their process. So because that closed the gap, we, we did not utilize the revenue above projections for that project, because we could utilize that $7 million. It does extend the timeline for the project. We, we have made a commitment to ourselves in, in reaching out to the Atlanta Regional Commission to ask if there are ways that we can streamline and, and fund that project quicker.
Okay.
If there are things that we can do to speed up the process as much as possible through a federal process.
Okay.
To try and deliver that more quickly. But, but since that funding is identified and, and moving forward, that was, that was one of the reasons we had not identified that we originally had, and then pulled it off once that funding gap was, was closed.
If there's anything I can do as chair to help with that, even if it's to provide correspondence, let me know.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to be in support of Commissioner Gamble's interest to address that intersection.
Yes, ma'am.
And will be glad to do so. I also want to address comments about a project that's in another Commissioner's area. I would like to support any Commissioner without taking away from consideration for what another Commissioner is doing. And I know we've had some discussion during our work session regarding a trail project that was brought up, and it has been shared, and I don't want it to be out in the atmosphere that this is just a sidewalk project that we're spending $6 million on, because that is not accurate. A presentation of that project was shared with the public and Commissioners last year extensively, and I don't want, I do not want to speak for the District Commissioner, I will defer to her. But it is an extensive initiative to develop a trail project 30 miles along the Chattahoochee River, and Cobb County is fortunate to be the pilot of this 30-mile project here. And it is a robust amenity that I know that I am grateful to support, but I just don't want it to be, to, to be shared and left to open and for the public to perceive. There's a sidewalk that's going to cost $6 million.
Right. No, and I agree. I don't know how much more I can share about the project, but we also had discussion on yesterday, and Jimmy shared that it has already been established that the funding is appropriately budgeted for the project. So this is a project that we need to move forward with. And again, it is not a sidewalk project. It is a project that includes sidewalks. So I don't want there to be an unfair comparison to sidewalk to sidewalk when this project is more than that. It's not just a sidewalk project. So I'm definitely in support of this project, and, and, and that's all I have there.
Thank you. Do other Commissioners have any comments? I know this is a robust list of revenue of projection projects that will allow us to do a lot to address some gaps here. Yes, Commissioner Burl?
Yes, Jimmy?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the, if we go over the 114 million with the designated list, and would we bring up the additional requests, or could those be changed, or are they set in stone, or what?
No, ma'am, I meant that it's strictly a board decision. Should we have one additional payment, whether it's in January of 2022, we would bring that back to the board for you to allocate those funds. Of course, these would probably be good, good starting points, but there even, there, there may even be more than just these couple of projects.
But the projects have to be on the 2016 SPOS.
They have to be on the SPOS, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. And just one thing, I have to. Thank you, and just one thing, I just want to give a note of caution to the public and Commissioners is that this may not go away after today because just as with any SPOS program, some of these numbers could actually be modified based on what happens in the fields. We could actually have savings on some of these projects where you'll have to come back to all of us again, Jimmy, as you did before, and address what we'll do with those funds, but that will be a good position for us to be in. So with that, we had a motion, a second discussion. All of those in favor of this agenda item, please raise your hand. Okay, then we have four in favor. All of those opposed, please raise your hand. We have one in opposition. The motion carries or passes 4-1 with Commissioner Gambrell in opposition.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that takes us to our second public comment.
There are no other ones to sign up for.
Thank you. So we will now move into our appointment tab and the Commissioners will have to forgive me. And in preparation for yesterday, I didn't, I was not here for the discussion of these appointments and we have a number of them. I don't know if we decided to pare these down in a way that we can get through these quickly, but let me at least take a quick scan of this before I start with our agenda numbers. Okay, I am just going to go in order and hopefully we can go through these quickly. Some of these will be approval, some of these will be announcements. And we have number 39, which is an approval, and that is for Commission District 3.
Yes, I would like to reappoint Wynne McCurdy to the Rec Board.
Thank you. Item number 40, that is-
I think, don't we have to vote on that?
I'm so sorry, I'm trying to get through these quickly and I apologize.
It's confusing because we all have two appointments and you have one, but we still have to approve the district appointments as a board.
It's, thank you ma'am, I appreciate that. So that was, okay, so we have a motion to approve his reappointment, is there a second? Thank you, any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Alright, the motion passes 5-0. Item number 40, that's for Commissioner Gambrell.
Yes, and Jimmy Richards, if I could ask you to come up, I know you're here today. I'd like to announce the appointment of Jimmy Richards to the Cemetery Preservation Commission, but I'd also like everyone to kind of see Jimmy for a second. He is also our champion of Acworth-Dewes Road and helping keep it looking beautiful. So thank you very much for all you do for Cobb, for District 1.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as of 35 minutes ago, I am COVID vaccinated.
Safely, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, it's my understanding, item number 41 has been polled, so we will go to item 42, that's me. Are we okay? Sure, yes, go ahead Commissioner.
Yeah, well, yesterday during discussion, it was brought up that for the Development Authority, we've got to decide how we're going to split the appointments before we can bring an appointment forward, in my opinion, and I think there was consensus on that. So I don't think we can do that at this meeting because it wasn't advertised on the agenda, but that may be something you want to bring forward on the next agenda in March, at least for this one board because it is so, you know, different and we're trying to make it even across the board or fair.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate you sharing that. And yes, I will likely move forward with something to reflect our process for this particular authority at our next meeting. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 42, which is me. I've moved that we approve the appointment of Tina Clark to the Recreation Board. Can I get a second? Alright. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0, thank you. The next item, number 43, I move that we appoint Jan Galt to the Cemetery Preservation Commission. Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. Agenda item number 44, I move that we approve the appointment of Trace Bybee to the Property Advisory Commission. Second. Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? Did you have, okay.
Just one clarification, the clerk and the county attorney were going to give us a list of the Property Management Board, the Plumbing Advisory Board, the Home Builders, the ones that we have appointments to and how that's identified.
We need to walk through all of that, yes.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. So with that, there was a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0, thank you. Number 45, I'd like to announce the appointment of Stephen Vault to the Planning Commission and thank Murray Holman for his years of service here. And we definitely need to do something to recognize Murray for just him leading us at the county, for him serving on the board.
Number 46.
45. I'm sorry, 45, I'm sorry for Alice, thank you, I'm done. Thank you, I'm sorry, that is not for Murray, that is for Alice, thank you. We do always want to recognize Murray, there's another one there, yes, that is for Alice. Thank you, and thank Alice for her service. The next agenda item is to announce Barclay Russell to the Board of Zoning Appeals and this one, excuse me, is in replacement of Murray Holman. And again, want to acknowledge his service as well as, again, acknowledge Alice's service on our Planning Commission. Item number 47, I'd like to announce the appointment of Enrico Washington to the Airport Advisory Board Post 1 and thank our prior appointment for his service. All these announcements. Agenda item 48, I'd like to appoint, or reappoint Dr. Justin Toth to the Animal Control Board. He's been serving us well there. Agenda item number 49, announcing the appointment of Beverly Jackson to the Historic Preservation Commission. Agenda item number 50, announcing the appointment of Nick Marine to the Plumbing Advisory Board. Agenda item number 51, announcing the appointment of Willmark Harris to the SPOS Committee and I had to pull the name of Ms. Partain due to a conflict. Item number 52, announcing the appointment of Matthew Stigall and Lysandra Boykin to the Transit System Advisory Board. Number 53, announcing the reappointment of Dale Burcher to the Home Builders Advisory Board. And lastly, item number 54, announcing the reappointment of James Battle to the Heating and Air Conditioning Advisory Board. And with that, I believe we are moving on to Commissioner comments. I can't believe it just because we had such a large agenda book and it's still 2 minutes before 11:00, so we did great today. With that, we'll go ahead and start our Commissioner's public address, beginning with Commissioner Gambrell.
Thank you. First, we're going to kick off some of our March programs with healthy eating. You can join us for some hands-on virtual classes with the Cobb Extension in partnership with Cobb Senior Services. The first one being on March 10 at 11:00 a.m. via Zoom or Facebook, live with FACS Agent Zo. Next, Red Cross is doing a volunteer at American Red Cross blood drives or join their mission Critical Positions to carry out other aspects of their life-saving work. The Red Cross has a high priority need for blood donors and ambassadors and transportation specialists to continue delivering services to our communities. For more information, you can visit redcross.org/volunteer or you can email gerecruit@redcross.org or call 404-575-3749. And we have a Lucky GovWay coming up on March 17 for those who are 55 and over. Our Chick-fil-A in West Cobb has partnered with our West Cobb Senior Center to provide a free sandwich gift card at a drive-up-only event. There is a limited number of cards available and you need to call the Senior Center at 770-528-8200 to register. And in case you didn't know it, March was also Pizza Month. Our North Cobb Senior Center will hold a Free Culinary Creations Bagel Pizza class from 11:00 to noon tomorrow, Wednesday, March 10. Advanced registration is required. For more information, you can call 770-975-7740. And our Read Across America in celebration of March as well. In celebration of Read Across America Month, the Cobb Library Foundation is hosting their first annual Storytime fundraiser. Join us every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday at noon to hear a story. Then you can visit celebrateseuss.givesmart.com to vote for your favorite storytime or text CELEBRATESSEUS at 76278 to place your vote. The deadline to submit your votes for your favorite story is Wednesday, March 31. And lastly, our Lake Point Sports Complex in Emerson, which is just north of us, has been designated by GMA and HSA as a mass vaccination site, which will be opening March 17 by appointments from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. You can go to their website at myvaccinegorgia.com and you can register. If you are one of the categories that are shown here, you can click and it'll take you to the earliest appointment. If not, there is a form below that you can fill out, provide your birth date and also your profession, and then they will schedule you accordingly once the Governor opens up that classification for vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. Somewhere in there. I don't see that.
Okay, while we're looking for that, why don't we go on to Commissioner Burl and then we'll come back to Commissioner-
Oh, found.
Oh, we've got it, great.
It was lost and now it's found. Thank you. Okay, yes, so from the office, next slide. I just want to give a general reminder with the new CDC guidelines that came out. I know there's a lot of excitement and we have so much to be excited for, it's really a parting of the skies to a certain degree. But please, please still wear your masks, please still socially distance, please still wash your hands. I'm hearing rumblings around the district that there are plans for some large, medium, large-size events that are maskless and I just do not encourage that because while the trends, while we're downward trending at this point in time, we want to, we want to see it through. You see something through to the end. In this case, we are still doing the vaccines, we're opening it up to more individuals as a community and just because you have the vaccine only means your body can sustain or go through the course of that virus. It does not mean that you cannot pass it on to someone else. So just in being mindful of your broader community, it is highly encouraged, strongly encouraged to continue following the guidelines as we have all become accustomed to. But we are, we are nearing the end, so get excited. Next slide. So we did end the priorities tour, however, we're doing a soft extension. There are some organizations that are still trying to get onto the schedule and we really appreciate your passion to want to hear about the priorities. So we are soft extending until March 20, but that is the absolute last day since I will be doing a community readout of all of the priorities as represented by District 2 at the end of the month. So do get your scheduled time in. If you are still unsure or still having trouble, just email the office, jerrica-richardson@cobcounty.org. You can take a picture of this QR code, it'll take you to the website link to book a, book a schedule, a time. Next. Just want to say thank you to a combination of folks, honestly. But as you know, I have my community liaisons. These are those in the community that are really helpful in getting the word out about information going on at the county and with some of the organizations. And so this past week, we hosted Cobb County Small-Medium Business How Can We Help Forum in conjunction with Select Cobb and with Sonya Grant from Cobb Works. So a big hearty thank you to Bobby, Sonya, and Dana for doing an incredible job getting information, telling the story about what Cobb did recently with the $50 million, the $50 million grants that went out to businesses, but also what we have to look forward to and what options are currently available and how to avoid those pitfalls. So if you're interested in watching the recap, it is available on my page, but also at the QR code. Just to reiterate, this is Gabrielle Tobin, she was able to join us, so you got a chance to see her, but just in case, we wanted to give everyone the opportunity to at least see a picture of her in flesh, so thank you. Community updates. Water, adopt a stream. So this is an expanded opportunity. So Chemical Monitoring Workshop is designed to teach volunteers about basic stream water chemistry and how to conduct chemical tests. So please participate and, yes, continue on, this is, it takes pictures in a passer, it happened, sorry. Next, we have the Libraries, Women of Science Steam Kits. And this is, sorry, something that will be available, registration starts on Friday. And kits can be picked up at the findings branch library. The address, 4290 Paces Ferry Road, and there's your QR link as well. These are some steam kits to help with learning in celebration of Women's History Month. That concludes my statements, my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. United Military Care is having some events this month and next month. Their, their gently-used book collection has started and will continue until April 23. Also, you can walk Marine Veteran Nate and get healthy. Tune in on Facebook each Thursday to watch his videos and get moving. You can search Marine Veteran Nate on Facebook. Their monthly Veteran Food Drive is this, next Thursday, March 27 in Marietta and they're located on Old Canton Road near Roswell Road, Upper Roswell Road, between Roswell Road and Sewell Mill, which is in District 2, but I'm kind of the veteran commissioner. And they're also seeking veterans to participate in the first Fall Veteran Art Show. You can contact Leenie Rubin, L-E-E-N-I-E dot R-U-B-E-N at unitedmilitarycare.org or call 770-973-0014. And you can register by visiting unitedmilitarycare.org for more events and fundraisers. Dance at the Art Place. Workshops are available for all adults, teens, and students as young as 3 years old. Head to theartplacemaryetta.org today and register for your spot. Workshops continue through the month and the Art Place is located at 3330 Sandy Plains Road, Marietta, Georgia. For more information, visit artplacemaryetta.org. Aviation Park is, has an exhibit of the Marietta Fence Gallery. Where the Town Center Community Alliance is proud to host the Marietta Fence Gallery at Aviation Park until March 14. The show featuring over 100 works of fine art- The show, featuring over 100 works of fine art and photography, debuted in Marietta in May of 2020 and has been traveling throughout the county before making its way to Town Center. Exhibit categories include fine art, photography, and student works. Be sure to visit Aviation Park to experience the exhibit while enjoying some of Town Center's best park and trail spaces. Aviation Park is located at 2659 Barrett Lakes Boulevard in Kennesaw. And on next Tuesday, March 16th, the Town Center Community Improvement District will be hosting a virtual public forum on the Bells Ferry study, operational study, and this addresses the portion of Bells Ferry Road between Chastain Road, New Chastain Road, and Barrett Parkway and Piedmont Road. You can visit towncenter.cid.com/vision/studies for more information and to register to attend On March 17th, Cobb County Purchasing Department and the Department of Transportation staff will host a How to Do Business with Cobb County Government webinar at noon, and it's free informations, it's a free information session, and will highlight DOT's Road Maintenance Division and the type of business opportunities for bidding, including drainage repairs, maintenance, landscaping, sidewalk repairs, curb and gutter repairs, drainage preventative maintenance, and graffiti removal. Visit cobcounty.org/doin-business, and this is a program that DOT has started with purchasing and our How to Do Business seminars that we launched 10 years ago. And they're going, each month, they highlight a different segment of DOT, and this, this month, it's the road crew. So be sure and tune in for that. The Tim DeLeey Senior Center is celebrating St. Patrick's Day next Wednesday, March 17th, from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. While sitting in your car and enjoying the parade of decorated cars and small presents to get lucky, come and celebrate at the Tim DeLeey Senior Center, and it's sponsored by Heritage of Sandy Plains, First Step Physical Therapy, United Military Care, Cindy Richards with Best Nest Senior Advisors, Dignity Memorial, and Overture. And the Tim DeLeey Senior Center is located at 3332 Sandy Plains Road in Marietta. And I know Commissioner Gamble already announced this, but we are in a competition, folks. And last week, we read, well, week and a half ago, we celebrated March as Read Across America Day and Dr. Seuss's birthday by taping reading and Storytime. And you can visit the, visit us on YouTube. The Cobb Library Foundation is sponsoring this, and you can vote for your favorite Storytime. And I know you heard from Splash and Commissioner Gamble earlier, but I'm asking for your vote for Sportian Scout. So if you can search for Celebrate Dr. Seuss on YouTube, or you can give, you can go to celebrateseuss.givesmart.com by texting seven, or you can text by 76278 to vote and donate for your favorite Storytime. And I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day next Wednesday, March 17th. Wear your green, and also be sure and subscribe to our newsletters for additional information and events throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Okay, District 4 Golden Nuggets. We can move to the next slide. So when county and community collaborate, it is a win for everyone. There was a great deal of excitement a couple of weeks ago at a ribbon-cutting ceremony in Austell to create an access point to the Silver Comet Trail. So before the trail was created, residents created a walkway to access the trail, which was a little unsafe. But thanks to our Austell residents, Lolita Dixon, who's pictured on the top in the fuchsia jacket, and Deborah Johnson of ACT, who's to the left, and that handsome felon in the middle you guys will recognize as Michael Brantley. But thank you all for collaborating and making access to one of our greater assets in District 4. I really appreciate it, and so do the residents in that area. Next slide. So the Cobb School Foundation Scholarship, we have two graduating seniors from our 17 high schools in Cobb that were selected to receive a scholarship of $1,000. The criteria is you have to submit a high school transcript, two letters of recommendation, and a one-page resume, and an essay. For more information, you can visit the link at cobschoolsforumsstack.com backslash forums backslash senior scholarships 2021. The deadline is on March 28th of 2021, which is just in a few weeks. Next slide. Thank you to Kaiser Permanente for the 2021 MBA pop-up grocery distribution. That was this past weekend at the Ron Anderson Powder Springs, and you may recognize that person on the far right as my assistant, Deidra Watts, who was so kind to, to attend in my stead. But thank you all for consistently reaching out to the community, and as always, Deidra, thank you for always being there to help. Next slide. Also, the Mableton Improvement Coalition will have their annual meeting, the State of Mableton, on next Monday, and I have been asked to present to the, at the meeting, and that will be on Monday, March 15th at 7:00 p.m. via Zoom, and you can register. It's easier just to visit Mick's website at www.mableton.org. And again, that's next Monday at 7:00 p.m. Next slide. And finally, we do have a select group of libraries that are reopening, and they reopen, they will begin reopening on Monday, March 15th, which is next Monday, and you can get information on which libraries will be open at cobcounty.org/library/news/library-express. The South Cobb Regional Library will open with limited access, and the hours will be Monday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Tuesday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And I believe that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. I enjoy looking at everyone's slides. They make me hungry, but also, I get educated in the meantime, and I'm just enamored by the artistry and creativity of these being put together. March is known as Women's History Month, but you may not have known March 15th through 21st is known as Fix a Leak Week. You can save water and money by fixing water leaks and partner with EPA's Water Scent in doing so. So check your leaks around your home and make sure that you're good. Thank you to those who joined me yesterday. We not only had one, but two State of the County addresses, and I must say, the one in the evening, it was a more intimate experience. Commissioner Richardson joined me, but it was, it was nice to provide this format not only for the business community during lunch, but also for our residents in the evening. Thank you to all of the staff that provided data, some even over the weekend prior to this, and who were responsive in helping me share what's been going on at the county and what our path may be moving forward into 2021. We certainly have a lot on our plates in the midst of this pandemic, but I can say that we all know that Cobb County's future is bright based on all of the work that we did last year. We have something exciting coming. I should have put this in the State of the County address. That will come next year when we have nice pictures. But we have the All-Star Game, which is coming to Cobb County this year, and not only do we get to enjoy the festivities, we can also be a part of them. And if you would like to do so, you can register. There was a link, at least in my newsletter, and just encourage you, I think you can even go on the MLB website or the Braves website to volunteer. In recognition of this being Women's History Month, I wanted to recognize all of the commissioners for their historic achievement, what we have done in becoming Cobb County's first, first women's or all-women's Board of Commissioners has certainly got a lot of notice, and I just want to commend you for stepping up to run and serve. I learned in preparing for a speech I gave on women's history last week that women need to be told to run for office six times just to consider it, and also that women tend to wait until they are 100% prepared before they embark on a new venture. And so that can go to explain why this is such a unique accomplishment for us, because there are many women who are reticent to step out and lead despite being qualified and sometimes overqualified. So know that with each of your individual service, you are inspiring other women to consider doing what you're doing here, and that's leading this county. Thank you. And that concludes my comments. However, we do have another matter to address. During our announcements tab, there was one announcement that was made that should have been in approval, so we will have to go back to Agenda Item Number 40 and approve the appointment of Jimmy Richards to the Cemetery Preservation Commission, and this is for Commissioner Gamble. So commissioners can indulge us?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Jimmy Richards to the Cemetery Preservation Commission.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, and with that, we're adjourned.